Hey, good evening and welcome to the February 27th, 2012 meeting of the East Hampton School Committee on this balmy spring day. Sorry, bear with me while we get this up. We will first, oops, sorry, I gotta do an announcement regularly, don't I?
Yes.
And the first announcement is about the way the meeting is recorded. So for those of you who are tech savvy out there, you'll know what this says. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and by East Hampton Public Access Cable. Would you handle the other announcements for us, please?
I will. The next school committee meetings are Tuesday, March 13th, Tuesday, April 10th, and Tuesday, April 24th. There is no school on Tuesday, March 6th due to the presidential primary elections, parent-teacher conferences, and professional development. There's a half-day of school on Friday, April 6th due to teacher professional development. There is no school April 16th through April 20th due to Patriots' Day and spring break. There is a half-day of school on Monday, May 7th due to teacher professional development. Junior-senior prom is scheduled for Friday, May 18th at the Hotel Northampton. There is no school on Monday, May 28th due to Memorial Day holiday. Senior outing is scheduled for Monday, June 4th. East Hampton High School Class Night Awards is scheduled for Tuesday, June 5th. East Hampton High School Senior Harbor Cruise is scheduled for Thursday, June 7th. And East Hampton High School graduation is scheduled for Friday, June 8th.
That's good news, right, Ryan?
Oh, yeah.
Whole bunch of folks counting. How many days is that? Are you guys doing a count?
I haven't been counting down. I should, though.
Oh, okay, see, all right. So the school committee would like to thank Tim, who's here on behalf of East Hampton Cable Access Television, or Public Cable Access Television, but the service that he provides is also supplemented by the work of volunteers. And East Hampton Public Access Cable stations, as channels 5, 19, and 20 are looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please call Greg at 413-203-1360. We have some correspondence.
Yes, we have several.
And some which requires a response.
Right, yes. Of course, you have your Chartwell's newsletter. And then there is notice from Westfield State University that they are hosting the Department of Higher Education's Board Meeting on March 6th, 2012, at 10:00 a.m. and have invited us to attend. So if anybody is interested in doing that.
Now, remember, that's the higher ed, so that's college, community college, university system. Because at first I thought, oh, maybe I'm free, and then I thought, I'm not sure I'm free.
The second, then, is the notice from the MSBA that they have reviewed the construction change orders. There's been four put in so far that have amounted to $234,321. And then the next one was an email from Lori. It was a good article about the homeless student transportation cost. And I believe in a separate email Nancy had mentioned that that's about a $10,000 cost to our district, and it's an unfunded mandate, from what I understand. And then notice from-
Can I actually stop you there?
Sure.
I'm gonna break with the proper protocol here, just to point out that this is one example that, along with others of similar type, put extraordinary pressure on the finances of different school districts, because it is hard to anticipate the budgetary needs that this item outlines. And you don't want, I think, the state, the governor and the leadership in the State House don't wanna set up sort of perverse incentives, which is where communities actively discourage particular kinds of students from becoming parts of their school districts because of the financial consequences. This also includes special needs students, where essentially this is a Commonwealth responsibility, not a community responsibility, and should be financed, in my view. And I'm not speaking for the school committee, I'm speaking as a member of the school committee, but only as one member, that this is another example of a cost that should be covered by the Commonwealth, not by the individual community where the homeless student or any student of special needs happens to be. We should all be prepared to embrace all the students who live in our communities, but understand that there are extraordinary costs for some students that they, for an education that they deserve, and that the expense should be a Commonwealth cost. So, thanks for letting me interrupt.
Next correspondence is from the Hampshire Council of Governments, notifying us that they've established a working group to create a series of face-to-face roundtable discussions with their local and state legislatures, and they would like your feedback in response to four of the questions that they have answered or posed in the correspondence. So they would like our feedback on that.
Right, and what I was gonna suggest is that we make this, and if I read this, we have time. We do not need to address this tonight. But what I was gonna suggest is that we actually refer this to the Policy Subcommittee to handle our response to these questions, rather than having us do this in serial fashion. That if you have suggestions for responses to these questions, that we forward them to the Policy Subcommittee, and that the Policy Subcommittee, if necessary, will respond to those questions. Does that seem reasonable?
That does accept they would like the response by tomorrow.
Oh, I missed that.
But I mean, I don't see any problem with responding late. I mean, if they want our feedback, then late's better than not at all.
Yeah.
If we can, if we can get it organized, you know, in the next couple of weeks.
I think it needs to be, this is a letter that arrived between meetings and between scheduled meetings, which we are required under law to publicly announce, including the agenda. So, without any disrespect intended to the Hampshire Council of Governments, there wasn't a way for us to get this on an agenda between the time we received the letter and tonight's meeting. So, I agree that it will be late, but I think it should be part of the next Policy Subcommittee meeting. But I'm not encouraging, I'm not trying to discourage any member of the committee from responding individually to the questions. There's just a difference between responding individually, where you are one school committee member, as opposed to saying, we as a school committee think these are the questions that matter. You'll also note that on the membership, there's no one from East Hampton. So there's not a person in the community that we can contact directly about that.
Can we just, someone call tomorrow and say that we're basically working on it?
I'd be happy to take on that task.
Then, before we leave tonight, maybe the Policy Subcommittee can get together and decide on our next meeting date?
Sure. Is that okay? I mean, I suppose we could just let it go by, but... All right, thank you. Any other correspondence? That's it, correct?
I think that's it.
Okay, so, we're, this is terrific, the gifts. I would, I can't move it if they're reading other gifts individually. But I could say it loud enough that somebody else could.
I make a motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the gifts as outlined in the, in our packet of information. There's a lot to read.
Right, motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? It's terrific. There is, there's, we would be reading half the, half the names, and at the fear of either leaving someone out. But it's terrific, just for the benefit of people listening. There's been extraordinary support of any number of fantastic programs in the schools related to any, you know, a whole bunch of terrific things that are going on. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would point out, and there's one item here, which is related to a gift from the East Hampton Learning Foundation, and I know that they're having one of their major fundraising endeavors this Saturday. And I believe, am I right? Does anyone know? I believe there's still tickets available?
I believe so.
For that event. And I would encourage anyone who's interested in supporting the kinds of initiatives, and I will just mention that they made possible, provided subsidies for the East Hampton High School Arts Festival, for the Model United Nations, for connecting activities. Whitebrook Middle School Band and Garden Project, Maple School Poetry in Motion, Center Pepin School Student Leadership Club, and Connecting First Graders to the Science Program. Those are all terrific programs that the East Hampton Learning Foundation has generously supported, and in a total amount of $15,000. That money comes from events like the one that they're hosting this Saturday. I've been to it in the past. It's a terrific event. So I would encourage folks who are listening to attend, if they can. Okay, matter for public speak. Is there anything else before we do matter, public speak? Scrolling through here electronically, okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda? Someone who's not already scheduled to speak? Going once, going twice, done. Okay, so we have a couple of presentations. Superintendent Paulson, would you introduce our presenters?
I'd be delighted to. We're really very pleased tonight to have a presentation from the Strategic Planning Initiative for Families and Youth, SPIFI. SPIFI did a survey for us, a Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. And Heather Warner and-
Catherine Brooks.
Heather Brooks and Nancy Dunn from our high school are here to give us a synopsis of the data that was acquired through the survey. Our schools use the survey information often when we're writing grants, because they often ask for information on prevention and risk factors in our district. So, we do use the survey. It happens, I believe, every two years. And they're going to give us a little overview of it. Heather?
Um, yeah. Would it help to, is there a light on this end of the room or something that would-
Dr. Prun, could you get that light, please? Thank you.
So these, the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, well, let me go through.
I'll be right back.
Is that, can you still see? Is that, do you have enough light?
Should I leave some of these others off?
That's good, actually.
That's okay?
Yep.
Right, as it is?
Yep, that's good. So SPIFI is a countywide coalition that's made up of a lot of different sectors of the community. We have like over 80 partners now, and we meet biannually. We also, our main mission is to, is drug and alcohol prevention, and we do that by looking at the risk and protective factors that affect drug and alcohol use among young people. We have four core communities that we're funded to work with, and East Hampton is one of them. Northampton was one of them, but we just assisted them in writing their own Drug-Free Communities Grant for $125,000 a year for the next 10 years, just for Northampton. And we're hoping that similarly, we can help launch some of, some money here in East Hampton to do that in the future. And part of that is building a strong task force here. And Nancy Dunn and I have been co-chairing a task force for the last couple of years. And, well, I'll talk a little bit more about some of the activities that the task force has been doing. But basically, we just bring people together, parents, school administrators, youth, agencies, the DA's office, the police, to identify the strengths and needs of the community and create an action plan and work on some projects. So four of, the four projects that, areas that we're working in are youth recognition, parent education, policies and regulations, and involving the business community. And the framework that we use, both at SPIFI, in the larger coalition and in the task force, and it's also the same framework that's used in this Needs Assessment Survey that I'm gonna go over. And it's kind of been the latest way of working in prevention, in the prevention field. And it's based on risk and protective factors. Risk factors are anything that increase the likelihood of drug and alcohol use among young people, as well as like violent behavior, or teen pregnancy, or any other host of risky behaviors. And protective factors are anything that sort of are a buffer against those oncoming risks. I guess protective factors, you know, you might see as resiliency in a young person, and what builds that resiliency. And these risk and protective factors happen on different levels in the community, at the individual level, the family level, the school level, and the community level. And the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey also divides up these, you know, the questions that we ask young people pertain to those different sectors of the community. And the work that we do, we try to create strategies that affect all of those different sectors. And please, I'm gonna talk really fast to try to get through this quickly, but also stop me if you have questions or anything like that. So protective factors, I won't go through all of these, but a lot of them have to do with young people feeling recognized and rewarded for their efforts. At the peer level, religion is also, and moral values are seen as protective factors, along with social skills, who they're hanging out with, and that kind of thing. The risk factors at all the different levels include availability of drugs at the community level, community disorganization and economic deprivation. At the school level, it's basically academic failure, and it's actually really the fear of academic failure, the sense of, that the student, their sense that they're not gonna succeed, and a lack of commitment to school. And at the family level, it could include family management, you know, do you know where your child is? When they're away from the home? Do you know when they've done their homework? Is there family conflict going on? And the peer individual level, you know, early initiation of drugs and problem behaviors, rebelliousness, perceived risk of drug use, and that kind of thing. So, the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, we've administered this in East Hampton in 2007, 2009, and 2011. Prior to that, there was a Safe-
Safe and Healthy Schools Survey.
Safe and Healthy Schools Survey. A lot of schools across the nation also use the YRBS, or the Youth Risk Assessment Survey. But grants and, you know, some states mandate these surveys, and it's, I think it's likely that that's coming down the pike in Massachusetts. A lot of federal money and state money that's distributed requires that schools do this kind of survey. So you're ahead of the game in East Hampton on that. And in fact, you're starting to get trend data and that kind of stuff. We do the survey with 8th, 10th, and 12th graders. And we survey all, all 8th, 10th, and 12th graders who are present at school that day. So it's not a sampling, it's a, you know, a whole survey. And this year is the first year that all 13 school districts and some charter schools have participated in this survey, all 13 in Hampshire County. So it's really great for, great data that we're collecting. In East Hampton, we surveyed in March. We do it at a time when we, when there hasn't been like a holiday or some time or vacation when students would be more likely to have drank in the last 30 days. So we try to time it so that we get good results. We surveyed 253 students, and the response rate across every grade was really good. Up here, you can see it's 98 for the 8th graders and on down to 68 for 12th graders, but still a valid number of students to really trust that we're capturing what's going on. And this is what the report that we get actually ends up looking. Like, we get pages and pages of this kind of data. So, it compares the three years of East Hampton data, along with county, there's a little dot for the countywide results, and then a diamond for the national results. So we're able to look at this data in comparison with that. And this is really tricky to read, of course, so we're gonna kind of break it down and give you much more easy-to-read snippets of what we found interesting in the data. But I also wanna just let you know, you know, people always ask, well, how honest were the students? And how can we trust this data? And a couple of things, and one is that we actually ask an honesty question, which on surveys has been proven to be reliable. And East Hampton, like the rest of the county, responded, 97% of students responded that they were very or mostly honest. Any student that responds otherwise, that survey is thrown out, the entire survey. We also have a fake drug on the survey, and any student that reports that they've used phenoxidine, that survey is thrown out. We also look for inconsistent responses, so that if someone says that they've never used heroin, but they've used it six times in the last 30 days, that whole survey would then get thrown out. And there's other ways that we can look at and clean the data as well. But it's, we also look at across East Hampton, and Amherst, and Northampton, and Hadley, and Belchertown, and Gateway, and we can see that the trends are really consistent across schools. And you might find something a little bit different. We found like at a Volk's School, for example, that, that smokeless tobacco is more common. And the kids report that they need hands-free to do their trade, you know. So it's, there's things that make sense that are different in schools. But for the most part, we're seeing that there's a lot of consistency. So, getting right down to some of the data, I'm gonna separate it 8th, 10th, and 12th. And in 8th grade, in 2011, you can see that alcohol use in the past 30 days is 8.2%. Inhalants is 5.2. In 8th grade, there tends to be a little higher inhalant use across the board. That goes down in 10th and 12th grade usually. Marijuana use here is at 4.3%, cigarettes at 4%. And then followed by sedatives and amphetamines, which are likely would be, what would be prescription drugs. I think there's people who, well, I'll go on to the next one. So in 10th grade, you see a pretty dramatic jump, where alcohol now in the past 30 days, you know, 18% of students are using it, marijuana 17% and on down. I think part of the takeaway message here, though, is that the primary drugs of choice, or the big picture of what's going on, is alcohol and marijuana. And it's, it's not heroin, or methamphetamines, or cocaine. And I think there's a lot of parents that have a lot of fears about those hard drugs. And there are a small cohort of students, maybe one or two, you know, three, that make this register here.
I think it's only one from each category.
One.
And it's not the same one either. I wondered about that. I've seen 1.2, would you have wondered? Somebody just went check, 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 check. But it was different students who reported it, and looking at the rest of their answers, they seemed fairly honest. They weren't being consistently reporting everything bad. So, that probably is pretty accurate, but as Heather said, it's a really low number. It's one person, essentially.
Yeah, and so there's a really, there's, you know, of course, we need interventions and, and, you know, resources for those students. But when we're looking at the big picture of prevention, we're, we're gonna target alcohol and marijuana, and cigarettes. And, and what's also found is that when you can lower those rates, the alcohol and marijuana and cigarette rates, you're going to lower your rates of harder drugs. It's just, there's a correlation there. And then in 12th grade, you see any, a larger jump here again. And I do, I don't wanna get into too much detail. We do know that there was a cohort going through where, when these same students were in 8th grade two years ago, and in, and, I mean, 10th grade two years ago, and 8th grade four years ago, they had a trend that was high use. And so this may not be what you'll see next year, the next time we survey for 12th graders. So this is probably a little higher than what would be your norm here. And let's hope so, really, 'cause, you know, this is past 30-day use. We don't even look at that much at lifetime use anymore, because we just find that that doesn't give a real accurate picture, but 30-day use does, yeah.
So, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. The 8th graders that you surveyed are the same as the 12th graders, the same last?
No, yeah, yep. In 2000, what would that be?
2009, 10th graders.
What she meant was that two years ago, the 10th grade data, and four years ago, the 8th grade data showed similar, larger numbers than this.
But what, you're following the same group of students?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So in, so one thing that's kind of good about that is that when you do put in an intervention, you can actually see if you've curbed the increase rate, you know, and with those students. You can actually, you know, for evaluation purposes and stuff, you can really see if you're making an impact with some of your programs, 'cause it is the same kids. You know, or you can put something in in 6th grade, and then see if you're influencing your 8th grade. You know, we don't have the 6th grade, we're not collecting data on 6th graders, actually, but, you know, over time, you can see. Anyway, I'll, so here again, though, you see that alcohol and marijuana are really, you know, higher than all of these other drugs, which are important, but not... And then these 12th graders actually have already graduated now, so you have a new 12th grade cohort now. So when we, when we went to look at trends, the 2007 data among seniors and 10th graders was a little bit distorted because of the death of the student in 2007, the alcohol-related death. And on, actually, on the day that we surveyed, people were at a memorial for her. So, we couldn't use our, some of our 2007 data to look at trends. But Catherine was able to go back and look at the Safe Schools data, Safe and Healthy Schools data from 2005, where exact same questions were asked. And so we were able to pull out a little bit of trend data. And they're not tremendous increases, like in high school, looking at past 30-day alcohol use. It has gone down slightly from 2005 to 2011. And in the middle school, we're seeing the same trend.
And something to note there, too, is that in 2005, it was actually younger students that were surveyed. But the high, middle school, it was 7th graders instead of 8th graders. And in high school, it was 9th and 11th rather than 10th or 12th. And you would expect usage rates to be higher for older students. So that makes it even more of a decrease when you sort of control for that in your head. We don't have exact number, an exact weighted control for that, because you just kinda keep kind of moving.
So, so it's, so it's good, is, I mean, we're seeing a good, a decrease there. For the marijuana use, we're seeing, the middle school's a little inconsistent, but in the high school, we're seeing an increase in marijuana use over the years. And I think, you know, especially in a lot of schools, and we can't directly relate it, but I think the decriminalization of marijuana, and just the media that led up to that the year before, you know, that that law was passed, you know, I think got a lot of exposure for young people. And, you know, we're wondering if that's influencing increased use. Hampshire County, we see the same, similar trends with 30-day alcohol use going slightly down, and recent heavy drinking going down. And then we see marijuana use going slightly up. And then, we've, we have this information for each grade, 10th, 8th, 10th, and 12th, but I'm just putting up the 10th grade here as a sample, where we asked as added questions on the survey, where are kids getting alcohol? And overwhelmingly, they're getting it from someone they know who's over 21, 26%. 14% from someone under 21. 14% are getting it at home without their parents' permission. 12% get it at home with their parents' permission. 7% from an older brother or sister, or from a brother or sister. 6% from a stranger, 3 with fake ID, I mean, without a fake ID, and 1% with a fake ID. You know, I think for older generations, you think fake IDs, fake IDs are like what's happening, but it's not really what's happening out there. And IDs are so technical now, and so expensive, kids are just not using that. It's really about social access. And I think that's why, when we can do things in the community that change a social norm around the idea that we're doing kids a favor by giving them alcohol, or that someone did it for us, so we should do it for them, it's, we're really not doing them a favor. And, you know, and I think if we can get parents on board more, too, to both keep alcohol, you know, locked up, and to not be providing it, you know, that will be really great, too. We looked at drinking and driving, and riding with a drinking driver. And it just- And it, it just, you know, it's a little, definitely kind of concerning, you know, with twenty-two percent of eighth graders. Some of the riding with a drinking driver could be even riding with a parent, um, or someone else who's, you know, over twenty-one. But kids are noticing. I think part of the takeaway message there is that they're noticing that the person in the car is drinking. And then, um, driving and drinking, you know, clearly goes, it's zero at eighth grade. You wonder who in tenth grade, and then it, it increases by twelfth grade. So just a number to look at and, and, and something to think about in terms of prevention efforts. This is, uh, students reporting that they had been drunk or high in school one or more times in the past year. And, um, here, East Hampton seems to be doing just, you know, sort of at or a little better than the county level. So, kudos to East Hampton there. Substance use in the past thirty days. Here, what we've done is, we, we have, um, and especially with, again, Catherine being so skilled at looking at this data, we can cross-tabulate our data, so we can look at, okay, so of, of those students who reported that their families have clear rules about alcohol and, and marijuana use, and they're two separate questions, how many of those students drank? I think I sa- I think I said that right, but, um, so of, for students who, fifty, well, if you, no.
Okay, fifty-two point two percent of the kids who said their families don't have clear family rules about substance use drank in the last thirty days. Only eighteen point seven percent of those who's, who said their parents do have clear family rules drank in the past thirty days. With marijuana, it's a bit less of a spread, but again, it's over thirty percent of the no clear rules using marijuana, less than fourteen percent of the yes clear rules.
And we, we know from research that having clear family rules, not just general, but about substance use, you know, it makes a difference. Research shows that, and here, you can see where it plays out. And I guess the takeaway message is, again, for families, you know, and if we can do these kind of presentations publicly with, with, you know, some of this information, and we have actually at some other presentat- uh, at the meet and greet that we had. But that, that it really does matter, and that parents need to be toeing a, a strong line.
Something we found out generally, too, not specific to East Hampton, but it's that, um, talking, parents talking to their kids about using drugs and alcohol didn't have as much of a correlation with their children's use. You'd think it would. You'd think if the parents take the time to talk to their kids regularly, but we did not see that same strong correlation, as with the clear family rules. And then the next slide is, um, the students' perception of their parents' attitudes.
So do your parents think it's wrong or very wrong to use alcohol? And those who's, who say their parents do think it's wrong or very wrong are much less likely to be using alcohol.
No, it's a very small number that said that their parents thought it was a little bit wrong or not wrong at all.
Most, most, so in other words, most parents.
Most, like eighty-plus percent of parents will say it's very wrong or wrong. And that's why you see really high numbers of usage among those whose, whose parents say that, that, those who say their parents don't think it's all that wrong. That's a very small number of kids. And that's, in the most, for the most part, those who're gonna be the kids who are reporting use, the ones whose parents are okay with it.
So, I guess, I'm just gonna try to fly through some, uh, 'cause I know it's already been about twenty-five minutes. So, we're up against a wall here, because teens are wired for risk-taking. And where, you know, the old, this is your brain, this is your brain on drugs, you know, we know that that kind of statement doesn't always work with young people, but we've got so much more information now. The science is really behind it. And, um, you know, so I think if we can go beyond just the, this is your brain, it's an egg frying, and really give parents and teachers and students the, the, you know, science behind it, it, it could be very helpful. So this just shows, you know, a fifteen-year-old male non-drinker, and a fifteen-year-old male heavy drinker, where, in their brain activity when they're doing a memory task. And the brightest, the, the brain activity. Again, there's this whole thing about the damage that drugs and alcohol in doses of even five drinks twice a month, and, and the damage that can do to a developing brain. And, and I'm not talking an adult, an adult brain, but a developing brain is actually a, a sort of a different thing they're finding. And so we have the healthy twenty-one-year-old non-drinker, and then the sober drinker with a history of alcohol use, and the, the pits are sort of dead zones that are in the brain. And, um, so, you know, I think that the, the other thing that we've known for a long time, but is starting to make sense with the science, is that when kids, when we can delay the onset of kids using drugs, even by a couple of years, their chance, the chances are that they're gonna become an alcoholic, or a problem drinker, or sustain this, you know, level of brain damage is much, much less. And you can see, you know, by the time you're twenty-one, only seven percent of those people who start after the age of twenty-one become problem drinkers. There's also, well, I guess I can't go on too much with, more with the brain science, but the, the slides are in your packet, so you can sort of see where, you know, where that's going. And there's some, there's some myths that are outlined here. You know, everybody does it, no, everybody's not doing it. And really, if you looked at that tenth grade data, only, you know, what was it, like thirty percent or less were, were drinking, you know, ev- in the past thirty days. And most students are not. So I think we, we need to remember that the majority are not, and support those kids in, in making those kind of choices. The European myth, and that drinking at home is safer, not a good message. It, it sort of increases early initiation. So our goal is really to avoid use, delay use, identify those risk, the community risk and protective factors, identify target factors that will guide prevention efforts, and establish new community norms. And, um, oh my goodness, I could just go, these are all in your packet, so there's more information.
Heather, I think it might be good to point out some of the family protective factors, because I think there's some, uh, some good news in East Hampton.
There is, yeah.
A few of the.
So, this is all grades combined, eighth, tenth, and twelfth. And so when you go through it individual grades, you may find it higher or lower in each grade. But as a snapshot, seventy-eight percent of students said that they can go to their mom or dad with a personal problem. Sixty-seven percent said their parents notice when they do a good job and tell them. And sixty percent, sixty-one percent say their parents ask for their input in family decisions. And these are all part of the protective factor profile that we see in, in the, in the, in our data, and those are all protective factors. Family risk factors, forty-five percent are saying they have brothers or sisters who drink. Sixty-nine percent say that an adult in their life, they know an adult in their life who got drunk or high in the past year. Eighty-four percent of parents say their parents think it's wrong for them to drink. So that's where Catherine was saying, that most parent, most parents are sending the right message. Eighty-six percent of parents know where their children are and with whom, so that's also really good. And eighty percent have clear family rules about substance use, reported, as reported by the, the young people. School protective factors, um, the students report that there's lots of ways to get involved. Ninety-three percent of students say that there's lots of ways to get involved after school. And I think East Hampton has the, you know, it has the jump program at the high school and middle school, which is, you know, kind of unusual for communities to have after, structured after-school programs. And so that's great, and there's a lot of other great stuff going on. Lots of chances for one-on-one with teachers. My teachers notice when I do a good job, and the school lets my parents know I've done well. This is low. I think, um, when you get into the middle school and high school, it, there's less opportunity to meet one-on, one with parents. They're not coming and going from the school as they are in elementary school. But still an area that maybe could be improved on, um, 'cause it is a protective factor. This is just how East Hampton compares with Hampshire County. It's about the same for students perceiving that they're doing, not doing well in school. Thirty-nine percent perceived that they were at risk for academic failure. It's again, higher in the twelfth grade, but that's that cohort, too, just to keep in mind. And then, low commitment to school. And actually, the sixty percent, I think, is a good, is actually reflects a good, positive trend, and the forty-two percent. You want that bar to be high, where you want the academic failure one to be low. So, you can also look at depressive symptoms and the perceived risk of drug use, those are risk factors. And, so when you have a high bar here, sixty-three percent of tenth graders don't believe that alcohol and drugs are, are risky to do, to, are risky to your health. And so that's something that, you know, can, you know, gives us a clue about where to start with our prevention efforts, or what kind of curriculum do we wanna have in the, in the classrooms and that kind of thing. And then we have a whole bunch of school climate data that, you know, we have a handout that's, you know, just lays it all out, um, but broken down. It includes things like, you know, there's a lot of chances in my school to help decide things. East Hampton tenth graders are doing really well when, in terms of letting their parents know they've done well. But again, it's like you're higher than the county, at thirty-four percent of tenth graders, um, reporting that parents are, are letting know. But do we, we have to ask ourselves, is thirty-four percent a good number, you know, for our community? Or, you know, are we happy with that, or can we improve on it, even if we're better than the county? Here again, my teachers notice when I'm doing a good job and let me know about it. Well, three-quarters of the students are reporting that, that, that teachers are letting them know, so that's great news. We saw it a little bit, you still have to ask, though, like, what's going on with a, a certain number of those eighth graders that aren't feeling that, um, that they're being let know, it's, you know, thirty whatever percent, thirty-three percent? And is there a room for improvement there, even though it's still a good number? We looked at school climate in terms of, we asked a question, I feel safe at school. And most kids do, but you still have to, you know, the, the number of students who are reporting that they don't is still enough to, you know, wanna try to do something about it. During the past twelve months, I've been picked on or bullied on school property. So we looked at that, um, again, with the eighth graders, it was a little bit high, with almost half of students reporting that. We also do wanna really comment, though, that with the increased attention that bullying has gotten, a lot of students, you know, misinterpret what bullying is, and maybe over-reporting, and especially at the eighth grade level, that, that's, there's a likelihood that that's what's driving that number up as well. We asked, we looked at where are kids getting bullied, and again, this is all in your handouts, so I'll probably just skip through it. And there's more you can look at in your handouts. We also did a faculty and staff youth recognition survey, and asked the faculty and staff, you know, what, how they feel about whether they're noticing, you know, students, if students do a good job, and so on. So, I think that's about all there's time for. We have a, a lot of initiatives that we've been working on in the community. You've probably seen these social norms marketing things, that's all coming out of SPIFI and the East Hampton Prevention Task Force. We've been doing mini grants for youth recognition, and right now, the high school is holding three of those, at a, I think about six hundred to eight hundred dollars total. We partner with the police and retailers to do compliance checks. And the SAD group that Nancy's involved with participates in these, and, and other activities with retailers. We're just initiating an above-the-influence program at the high school, and that'll be starting up, I think, tomorrow. And, um, then, that we can also do things like Safe Homes Directory, where we give parents each other's phone numbers and contact information, and parents pledge not to, you know, have parties with alcohol at their houses, and things like that, so. Those are just some of the initiatives. And the, the task force meets once a month, fourth Thursday, and anybody's welcome to come.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
Any questions?
That's a lot of information.
It is. And that was a brief overview. I, I think what's good is to look at the East Hampton data compared to Hampshire County, the, the many graphs where it shows, um, especially protective factors, because I think that that's reassuring when you look at that, uh, and, and makes us understand that, uh, you know, so many parents and so many families, and, and so many teachers in the schools are doing a good job of providing those pro- protective and preventive factors.
Yeah, there's a lot going on in East Hampton that's really going well, you know, and, and has been going well for many years, too, in the schools, it's, yeah, so.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Doctor Perron, would you mind turning the lights on, please? All right, so, as soon as, uh, the podium's available, I'm going to invite Ms. Rabello, our middle school principal, and Jessica Katusik, uh, to come up and talk about the governor's project. We received a, a letter from the governor asking if we had an emissary in, in middle school that we could send to a fabulous project out in Boston. And so I asked them to come here tonight and tell you about it. We're, we're very honored that Jessica accepted and, and participated, and we'd just like you all to know a little bit about this wonderful project and the work that Jessica's doing.
Jessica who?
Well, if you were at Whitebrook, you would definitely know who Jessica is. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about how this all started, and how we chose Jessica to represent Whitebrook. As Ms. Follinsby said, Governor Deval Patrick started this last year. He called it the Project Three Fifty-One. And that's because there are three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in all of Massachusetts. His goal was to get an eighth grade representative from every single city and town to go to Boston to work on service learning projects. And I'll let Jessica share more about what happened on that day, um, and some of the future events that are coming up. But there was a huge criteria list for students who they were looking to represent the school. So they really wanted it to be somebody who was an all-around great student, um, somebody who was a good role model, somebody who already partaked in, you know, already took part in community service, had good academics, was a good citizen, was a good role model to other students. And the eighth grade teachers, and then myself and Mrs. Browski, you know, looked at our entire eighth grade student body, and Jessica rose to the top. And so if you have been at Whitebrook recently, you'll know why. Jessica is involved in so many ways at Whitebrook. She truly is a leader. I was, I was asking her earlier tonight if she had thought about a career. I know that she's only going into the high school, but she's a natural-born leader, and she's gonna go far no matter what she chooses. But she's involved in our band, she's involved in our chorus, she has great academics, she's a great student in the classroom. The teachers love having her in the classroom. She's a, a student senator, she's a peer leader, she's a good role model to other students. She's loved by all at Whitebrook, and I could go on and on and on. But Jessica was definitely, um, a great choice for us to have, to represent East Hampton and represent Whitebrook. And it was great when I had the opportunity to ask Jessica if she would be willing. This was a whole Sunday affair, so she had to give up her weekend to take part in this, and she was willing to do that to represent. So, Jessica, I wanted to present you with a certificate to just say that we, you know, appreciate you representing us for the Project Three Fifty-One. And, like I said, she's an excellent student.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jessica Katusik. I'm an eighth grader at Whitebrook Middle School, and yes, I am Bonnie Katusik's daughter, which you may be able to recognize without me saying so. Anyway, I am here to reflect upon an amazing event that took place in the, in this past January. This event took place on Janif- January fourteenth. It is called Project Three Fifty-One. Did you know that there are three hundred fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts? Yep. In December, three hundred fifty-one kids were selected, each representing one city in Massachusetts, to visit Boston to meet with the governor. Believe it or not, all I knew about this project was from papers I was given that said, well, basically, all I knew was I was gonna meet the governor and be served high-quality free food. I'm only kidding. I actually met with Ms. Rabello one day in December to find out and discuss my assignment. At first, I thought I was in big trouble, but I soon learned that on January fourteenth, two thousand twelve, I was going to take, I was going to take a bus to Boston, to the State House, to meet the governor, have lunch, and to do some sort of activity. Boy, was I excited. I mean, how would you feel if your principal just told you that you're going to represent your town in the presence of DeVal Patrick? Soon after, the day had come. I couldn't believe it. I woke up at five that Saturday morning and went onto the bus. On the way there, I was more quiet than I'd ever been in my entire life. But by the time we had arrived in Boston, I had made at least seven new friends. I then knew that this would be a very memorable experiments, experience. When we arrived, we went inside, got free shirts, and got seated in the flag room. At first, we were listening to a coordinator for the project talk about what the project was for. Basically, he said that this was the second year this, this event was occurring, and it was a huge success the year before. Then he finally got to the best part, bringing in the governor. Then, he stood, then there he stood, an average-headed, average-looking man who was ready to speak. As he stepped up the man-made stage, we gazed upon him in awe. This was our leader, our governor. He took the microphone and started to speak. We immediately got silent. He told us that the project was inspired by his vision of a state united by people in service. He even taught us the Project Three Fifty-One handshake. Then, he kept speaking of what the project represents. And then he sent us to do community service, which was, which was stated on our name tags. The assorted assignments were for working at the food shelter in Boston, then either painting murals, packing backpacks with supplies for children in need, or painting nurseries rooms in the Boys and Girls Club. Either those, or, or painting and repairing the MLK Tower. I was assigned to painting nursery rooms. I swear, I spent an entire four hours painting a wall purple. It was awesome. Then, after that, we went back to the State House, had dinner, and parted ways. I actually got thirteen new phone numbers that day, but that's beside the point. The point is, that day was dedicated to Martin Luther King's dream towards service and serving our communities, friendship, and honoring our towns with our leadership. That day is one I will remember for the rest of my life. All of those people I met and enjoyed time with will remain close to my heart forever. I have been inspired to never stop trying, ever, never give up. Always do community service, help out as much as you can, and just do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica and Ms. Rabello. And I understand, uh, that they, that there have been some letters about future projects that you might be involved in, that, that the governor wants to have this carried on and...
Yeah, I actually have that if you wanted to look at it.
Can you just summarize, uh, for us what it said?
Well, um, they're called Local Impact Days. They will support the ambassador service in their community on Earth Day, um, holiday week. Each Local Impact Day will feature an ambassador to kid, weekly training calls and one-on-one coaching. And ambassadors will unite the Commonwealth by serving simultaneously and in common purpose.
Wonderful. So, we'll look forward to that as well. Thank you so much, Jessica. You make us all feel very proud.
Thank you.
And Bonnie, you should be very proud too, which I know you are, but congratulations to you.
Well, I thought I recognized you, and now I know that you're Jessica Two-Six's mom. So, that's good. From now on, that'll be, that will, that will know you. That's great. Okay, so we have some matters for discussion.
And you all don't need to stay now if you have other things to go to.
Homework.
The finance subcommittee meeting minutes are in your packet. Um, I believe that we did basically discuss all the items in there at our last meeting when Andy spoke. So, I don't know if you have any questions. Not there they are.
Yeah, the preliminary budget numbers. Bracing. Thank you. Policy Subcommittee meeting.
Uh, let's see here. We met today, our last, actually, the minutes of our January twenty-third meeting are in your packet, but we did discuss, I believe those, uh, uh, what's on that, um, in those minutes. Uh, but today's meeting, we talked about the warrants and payroll. And basically, um, we decided that it's not really a policy that needs to be written for the district, but more of a procedural change. And, um, what we came up with, and I will write up the minutes, um, after tonight, is that we would have a list of warrants provided and a notice to finance subcommittee members sent out that that list is available to be reviewed, so you can come down and review, um, when you can. And then, after you've reviewed them, uh, the warrants would be mailed. And then, the approval by the school, school committee would happen last. But the approval, even though it might happen after they are mailed, but they will still be reviewed before the warrants are actually released. So, those are, were just basically a summary of what we talked about.
And that addresses, excuse me for everything, but that addresses the two concerns. We had a procedural concern about the timing of our vote and the dates on the warrants and payroll. And we had a substantive concern about the review. Um, and this will meet both of those concerns and, and improve the practice within the, um, within the district in terms of authorizing warrants and payrolls.
Right. And we also thought that it would be valuable to have in our motion, the date of the review, when a finance subcommittee person reviews them. That way, if any auditor looks at our motions and paperwork, they would, they would see that this is when the school committee approved it, but this is also when they were reviewed by a school committee person.
Terrific.
So, that was, that's it.
We have two, um, readings, yes?
We do have the second reading of the two concussion policies. One is the policy and one are the regulations.
We'll entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the, um, second reading of the athletic concussion policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
And then I move, can I go ahead and move on the second one?
Please do.
That we accept the second reading of the athletic concussion regulations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Uh, not quite, CES?
We had a meeting on January eleventh of two thousand and twelve, but I don't really have anything to share. There wasn't, it was just a regular meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you. And Ryan, yes, absolutely, you're up.
Sorry, jumping the gun there.
No pun taken.
Um, so, this week, we have a couple of big basketball games. The, uh, girls varsity basketball, they're a number four seed. They're playing, uh, archrival Hampshire. They're the number five seed, that's on Thursday. And then, that's gonna be at the high school, so we're hoping to get a lot of fans for that. Um, and also, that day, the boys varsity basketball team is taking on Mahar, but they're the number eight seed, Mahar's the number one seed, so that's off in Mahar. Uh, so, good luck to both of those teams. Um, Miss East Hampton, which, uh, I don't know if you guys know that, you probably do, but, uh, it's a talent show for, uh, anybody, any, uh, males. Usually, it's juniors and, uh, seniors that are interested in, uh, competing. It's a, it's a talent show that's, uh, held at Whitebrook, and it's pretty goofy. If you haven't seen it, you should go to it. It's, uh, April second. But we, uh, we're underway, uh, for, for preparing for that. Our first meeting for it is, uh, tomorrow. There's a superhero portion, talent portion, um, form aware, and then a questionnaire. So, uh, it's pretty funny, so, uh, uh, that'll be coming soon. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, on, uh, March twenty-fourth, that's a Saturday, um, the senior class is holding a fundraiser. Um, and it's, uh, a family game night and movie night. Um, there'll be a movie playing in the little theater. Um, and there's gonna be snacks. And I think, uh, I think we're serving spaghetti. Um, and there's gonna be a bunch of games in the cafeteria. And, uh, it's from five to eight, I believe, so you can, anyone that's listening, you can bring your kids. Um, everyone's welcome. And, um, they just have a good opportunity to watch a fun movie, have some food, and enjoy some games. And then, uh, the other fundraiser we have is the Yankee Candle, which is coming up fairly soon. I'm not sure when the exact date for that is, but hopefully, we're looking to bring in a lot of money for that, so. Thank you.
When you mentioned raising funds, what's the primary, uh, purpose of the, these fundraisers in terms of the expenditure, the money to raise?
Well, right now, we're, our goal is to lower the cost of the tickets for prom, 'cause right now, I believe, they're around seventy-five to eighty dollars. So, obviously, no one wants to pay that much for a ticket. Um, and also, we're, we're trying to, just, and the more money we have, the better, basically. I mean, uh, like I said, we don't wanna pay more for tickets. And, uh, any other expenses we can use, uh, we'll take that money, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll now turn our attention to the superintendent evaluation. Excuse me, I gotta grab a file. Here. Um, you each should have a copy of the latest, um, information, uh, regarding this process. And our intention tonight is simply to look at, uh, this information and, um, note any, uh, of the changes that we might like to make prior to our next meeting, where it's hoped that we can vote, um, the evaluation tool that we will use. We've been working for a long time, um, in work sessions, uh, developing this. Uh, just as a note for anyone who's, um, watching or listening or may see this, is that, um, starting in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the state has a one-size-fits-all, um, document they would like people, um, to adopt. And one of the questions that we'll be facing between now and September or August, more likely, of, uh, two thousand twelve, this coming August, um, is whether to adopt, to adapt, um, or to come up with an alternative. Um, the document that we have is fairly, um, similar in its basic, uh, organization and structure. Um, the copy that we have in front of us tonight includes some of the notes and feedback that we've got based on the conversations that we've had, both in the work sessions and that I've had with Superintendent Follinsby. Um, these observations, particularly some of the notes clarifying some of the procedures. Um, one thing I would say by way of introduction is that what we're trying to create is a document that is, um, useful. Um, and in order to be useful, um, the question is, how are we going to know whether or not indicators, um, are, are being satisfied? Um, and that's been sort of the challenge that we've been working our way through as we've been refining this document. So, um, what I thought we might do, are there any general questions or comments at this point in terms of the process? So, what I thought we could do is just go through each standard very, very quickly. Um, I think most of the standards are set and in good shape, just to see if there are any questions about any of the notations that are included. So, standard one, curriculum instruction, assessment indicators. We've looked at these before. Sense that if there's any desire to make any changes in those, it's only when we get to the evaluation indicator that there are notes. This is where it says, "provides effective and timely supervision and evaluation in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions." And you see the notes that are here and the suggestions. Some of this is just changing the verbs, but some of it's also, um, aligning it with the actual practices, um, that occur within the district.
Do you just wanna know if we're okay with it, or?
Yep. Any suggestions, questions, certainly? 'Cause I know this is our first opportunity to publicly discuss this together. Um, so if there are any questions about any of the changes, um... I take silence to mean that folks are comfortable with this?
Yes.
That's easy, 'cause this wasn't the section that you guys labored so hard on. This was my section. I see all this red here. It's like I am back in school, so.
It was a difficult section.
Um, thanks, that, there you go. Um, I, I think that, I, I would just make the comment, here's an illustration of the change that we're considering implementing. Um, the wording that we had ensures that team leaders, building principals, um, implement, uh, a high-quality portfolio of evaluation indicators that include all state-required elements and course-grade and teacher-specific methods. Um, the revised language, um, that's been suggested is, "supports administrators and administrative teams to develop and attain meaningful, actionable, and measurable professional practice, student learning, and district-school improvement goals." Um, and it goes on to say, "regularly visits," and these are the expectations that we have for the superintendent. "Regularly visits and maintains high visibility in the schools for purposes of observing model teaching and learning." Any questions on any of these?
So, the difference between exemplary and proficient is that proficient is encouraging your administrators, but exemplary is they're actually doing it and the superintendent is providing support.
Right. So, you're drawing attention to the key words being encourages and supports.
Correct.
Right. And that was the discussion that we had before. Um, particularly when we moved down to needs improvement, where we're back, right? Where we have encourages again, um... But the issue here is whether there's consistent review. So, we would expect, I mean, by implication, consistent review is what's the minimum standard for proficiency. Um, but I'm, I'm certainly open to a suggestion about those, those terms. What we had previously was, um, ask for needs improvement, encourages for proficient, and under exemplary, we had ensures. Um, ensures has a result component to it, whereas support simply means that, I think that's a different... You know, one is expecting the superintendent to, when you, we, we said before, under exemplary, to ensure that it occurs. Um, now, the language says supports, as opposed to that. So, are folks comfortable with that? We don't wanna return to the original language of ensures?
I would prefer ensure, 'cause to me, encourage and support mean the same thing, if I'm thinking of something. So, but ensure would be the superintendent's making sure that these things are happening. And the other one, proficient, they're just encouraging them to happen.
So, in, in a sense, if I'm understanding you, it's almost as though number three, proficient, would be encourages and supports, or encourages slash supports. That's where the word, right?
To me, they mean the same.
That's fine.
I'm fine with it either way. I just, may I speak?
Yes, please.
I just, uh, supports for me in the evaluation system means that, you know, I put expectations into place and support, uh, administrators, um, you know, to achieve those, uh, expectations. And I took this pretty much out of the, um, new rubrics. Uh, whereas encourages just means, you know, I might say to them, well, you know, I'd like you to do this. Whereas supports mean that, that I'm going to put the supports in place that ensure that, you know, administrators are, um, meeting those expectations. I don't have a problem with ensures and supports as those two degrees, but I just wanted to clarify.
That makes perfect sense.
Right. And, and just as an illustration, in the Standards and Indicators of Effective Administrative Leadership rubric from DESI, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, under proficient, it supports administrators and administrative teams. Under exemplary, it supports, um, administrators and administrative teams to develop and attain, right? So, it's all the same, all the way down through, and then models this, here's the distinction. And models this process, whose superintendent's own evaluation process and goals. And is able to model this element. So, I think their emphasis in, if I'm, I think I've got these matched up correctly. It's Indicator One D, is that the state language, yes, is emphasizes the word model, right, model, right? The state uses the word model. Sorry. Um, to sort of, to, to get at that distinction between what we're using as language, um, encourages slash supports, ensures, um... My sense is that in the, in the section that isn't up for change, the regular visits, and I think that, um, our, our standard is better than the state standard, which is not surprising. Um, that, because we put so much detail into this, that the mo- to say, is able to model this element in the state standard, for example, well, how do you know that they're modeling it? The way we know it is if they're regularly in the schools, um, for purposes of observing the teaching. I think that's the actionable piece. That's the piece that we could see. That's the piece that we communicate, um, back, um, by talking with building principals, talking with the teachers. How often do you see the superintendent? And does the superintendent, in those, uh, interactions with you, model the kinds of standards that, that you'd like?
And I could just clarify that models piece, because we went to a Smart Goals workshop with Carla Baer, uh, the deputy commissioner. And I wasn't clear about that language in the rubric. But what, the way she explained it to us is that if, uh, that models, it means that you are exemplary, that... That, uh, I'll speak about, um, uh, principals. So, let's say principals are exemplary, uh, about, I mean, I, I have one principal in my district, let's say. I'm just using this as an example, who goes into the classrooms on such a regular basis and always gives feedback to the teachers that's meaningful. That principal would be a model, um, that, you know, anybody in, in Western Massachusetts might want to come and see that principal and see how he does it. So, when it says models that behavior, it's, uh, in my case, it would be that I would be so exemplary that, you know, superintendents from other districts would want to come and see how it's done here in this district. That's what that model piece means.
And that's exactly the example that we highlighted before in our discussions. It wasn't in this piece, but it was in regard, and I apologize Nancy, you're gonna have to remind me, but there was the document that was developed here in East Hampton that then became a model for use in, um.
The str, uh, the strategy, the strategic plan.
Right, the strategic planning, that that's an example that we can point to to say, this is the evidence that indicates exemplary performance, because it's being cited by external authorities as a place where people can go from across the Commonwealth to see how it should be done. This is the way it could be done, this is how we think it should be done if you're trying to model, um, excellence. I think in the short run, I would support, um, the idea of keeping all of the changes that are outlined here with the change in the language that you suggest, Lori, and going back under exemplary to, um, ensures. Um, I don't think we could just put the word model in there, I think it's already covered in the portion that's still in black. Is that, are people clear about that, what I'm suggesting?
Yep.
All right, is that okay? Can we move forward with that change?
Yep, Peter.
Yep.
If I can, uh, do, with all respect to, um, agenda and process and everything, um, I feel like this is gonna take a long time.
Yep.
And I'm looking at the rest of the agenda and looking at Dr. Peron, thinking, you know, is this as productive as we can be as a committee? So, I don't know if we can change the agenda and move that down and take care of items where he may not have to stay and listen to all this, not that it's boring or anything, but.
Uh, give me a second here to look at the remaining items. I'm, I'm happy to, uh.
Or is this something that, I know we've had many meetings on this, but instead of putting it last and being tired, is this something we want to defer and have another meeting on? That would be my other alternative.
Yeah, well, I would, I would be, um, at this stage, and just so that you know, I, my suggestion is to go through this. In this example, we may not go through each one in as much detail, I wouldn't change any of the other three here. Um, I think this is the one and only time that the public, who expects us to implement this, um, evaluation document, gets to see us work on it in all of the work sessions. Um, we have not been, in effect, live and on camera for folks. I think it's valuable, um, you know, given our role in the community, that the public sees some evidence of how we've come to, to create the document. That said, I'm not opposed to moving into a portion of this superintendent's report, um, and then coming back to item Roman numeral two, two D, after we do the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Award update, if that would expedite other folks. I, really, I'm not, I mean, you know.
I think that he, that she was suggesting that you get, let, uh, Dr. Peron do his before we go back.
Oh, right, for the request of the change, I'm sorry, it's the request of the change in the East Hampton High School handbook, yes? That's what you're here for.
That is what I'm here for.
I'm, I'm happy to.
As fascinating as this discussion is.
Careful. I understand that this is the, what we use for administrators, not just superintendents. So, this is actually very edifying, that's what you were saying, I understood that exactly to be that. Would you be willing to, um, to jump the line and discuss with us the changes in the handbook that you have for our consideration? Thank you, let's go to that. Thank you, Bonnie, I appreciate the suggestion.
And I appreciate the suggestion also. Um, there was a presentation, uh, planned for this evening, uh, but because of the other presentations and the length of those presentations, it was, uh, decided that we would put that off. So, the, the paragraph, the attachment that, that I sent and that you received in, included a paragraph of context, because I wanted you to have some context for this change. It would have been valuable from my perspective to be able to have this discussion after seeing the presentations from those grant programs. But because, uh, there, there was the need to change the, the, uh, the presentation evening, we, I just wanted to make sure you had some context, and I, I'm sure everybody had an opportunity to read it. Uh, this change in the, in the, in the current language really is an addendum and it adds tools in our toolbox for our students who are at risk. And what we have historically done is offered opportunities for credit recovery in the summer, in the summer only. And what we're trying to do now is find more opportunities for students who are, um, behind in their credit attainment and who are at risk for, um, for, for dropout, to find opportunities to rec, recover credit during the school year. And the grant-funded programs that, that I, I spoke about, the Twenty First Century Grant, the Academic Support Grant, and the Pioneer Valley Work and Learning Program Grant, uh, have offered opportunities for credit recovery in the summer. And, uh, we want to e, expand that opportunity to our students for the school year. And the language that you see in the proposed addendum just states just that, that summer school and after-school credit recovery would be a viable option. And the reason I wanted to do it now as opposed to waiting is because we have students who are behind the eight ball, and we're trying to give them another opportunity, another tool to use to recover credit that they have lost either as freshmen or sophomores, juniors, as they progress through their, their high school career.
Any questions about the proposed changing or the context? There are two paragraphs, one, um, sorry, there's an introductory paragraph, right, for the past three years?
Yep.
And then there's the current language and the proposed language, and you are simply asking for our assent to using this, um, addendum in your program studies?
That, that is correct.
Right, currently, to put it in effect for this coming summer.
For, well, no, for, for this school year.
For this school year, right.
For the school year.
Pardon me, thank you.
Uh, and just, just so everyone understands, this has been brought to the team leaders. They approved it, it has been brought to the school council, and they've approved it. And it's, uh, originated in, um, discussions with the guidance counselors and with the dropout committee, which is chaired by the assistant principal. So, those three bodies have all molded over and worked on discussion, discussion.
Any questions?
I, I was actually just looking at the last sentence, which is in both current and proposed language. Principal will make the final decision regarding the granting of credits. Is that pretty standard versus the teacher doing that?
I think the, 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 the sentence there is really talking about with regard to a program. Because historically, East Hampton High School hasn't had, at least, you know, in the couple of years before I got there, there wasn't a summer school program. So, students had to go to another program, and so the home school would have to say, with guidance steering the student in that direction, uh, this is an approved program, because North Hampton High School is doing it, or whomever.
Okay.
And so, it's more of an accreditation, right?
Right.
That you're saying that this course or this course of study is accredited for us to make up for or to allow the recovery, right? But if it's internal, it's part of our own program, that just goes without saying, right? That it's then gonna rely on the teachers.
Right, the teacher, for example, in summer school, we've had, uh, the Twenty First Century Grant, we had, uh, teachers running a summer school class in English and math. And so, they had their standards that we approved for, um, for the credit recovery.
Great.
But the principal's the one who has to approve those standards for credit recovery.
And that is pretty standard for, um, for the state.
That's the way it's done.
Hmm. Questions, other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the changes to the East Hampton High School yearbook effective this school year with regards to, um, changing the current language for the credit makeup from summer school to summer school and after-school credit recovery.
Second.
Motion made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Okay, so now, I guess we come back to the operating question that, that you had before, Bonnie. I'm not opposed, uh, if people want to set another work session. Um, we have illustrated some of the process that we go through, um, and I don't, I, I'm not interested in keeping people here any later than, uh, than we have to. And there are a number of other i, items on the agenda. Uh, I, that said, I would like to achieve, um, a, a resolution on this, particularly for the superintendent. I, as people will clearly note, we're in the mid-year process of finalizing. Um, and because we've had ongoing conversations with superintendent, I don't think anything is gonna be a surprise. Uh, but nonetheless, I think we all, as, as employees, would love to know what, how we're being evaluated. Um, and Nancy's in the sixth month now, or shortly will be in the sixth month of the document that this is gonna be used for. So, if we're going to meet at an alternative time, I would encourage that we still do it so that we can have a final vote at our next full school committee.
And I'll just mention here that my superintendent's report is brief. I'm just going to give you brief updates on those three items, I just wanted to let you know that.
So, we need to then have a meeting between now and March thirteenth?
If we're not gonna meet, if we're not gonna continue through this document now.
That's not very.
I know, why don't we just try to keep going?
For a little bit?
Now, if, if that's okay.
Well, I think we're set on the evaluation indicator, we made that one change. So, then we're into standard two, and if it's all right, I'm just gonna turn to the persons, person or persons responsible for each standard to draw our attention to any dimension of it that they think is, is worthy of further discussion. I, I would just.
But did I, I didn't make the changes?
No, right.
Am I losing something?
No, no, all I'm saying is if there's, if there's anything in the suggestions or the feedback that you in particular want to comment on, I would simply point out that I, um, in translating the notes, um, in standard two, environmental indicator, under before exemplary, uh, it establishes, that's, that was a notation error on, on my part. Establishes procedures that empowers administrators, students, and staff to implement, yes? Does that fit with your notes, Sue? Great.
Uh, and that's because, you know, the, the language that was originally here in the rubric, um, talked about how I would apply and enforce student discipline policies. But that's really the, um, responsibility of the building principal. So, my, my job is to establish procedures that empower administrators, students, and staff to implement these.
Yeah, I actually like that wording.
Right, and again, those, uh, procedures will be documented, and that was something that we therefore can look at, because one of the questions that we kept coming back to in this process was, how are we gonna know? Um, and while we may not always be witness to the application of student discipline policies, say, when a principal is interacting with a student, we should be able to have access at any time to these policies and procedures that are outlined.
And evidence that I've, um, put those into place in the district.
Any other changes then for environmental indicator? Great, okay. And, uh, Sue, wave at me if any of the, uh, language changes require further clarification, because I don't want our case to, to leave, um, anything for you to work on in, in human resources management? We simply have a word change?
I changed administrators to educators, because, you know, I, I really am responsible for all educators in the district. And the, uh, needs improvement one, I, I just questioned supports the hiring of administrators that fit her philosophy of teaching. I think, first of all, you don't want it to be her, and it's not my philosophy. It's, it's really, um, you know, what good, what effective teaching is. Um, and that's why I thought maybe it could be does not consistently support the hiring of effe, effective educators, because this seems to be about recruitment and hiring.
Right.
Uh, induction and development of teachers in our district.
What if we changed, uh, supports the hiring of administrators, um, sorry, uh, administrators consistent with, uh, the, the goals of these state and public schools?
Now, remember, this is a needs improvement.
Right, right, but that is simply, and again, here I thought the language was does not participate, supports, participates, and a leadership role. And again, just for the benefit of folks, i, it, this is simply a way of distinguishing between unsatisfied needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. Usually, the basic outlines are fairly consistent, it's just a question of the degree to which the superintendent accomplishes that. Either does not, you're right, we used that word supports before, and supports made it on to the proficient or exemplary side. So, maybe that word is.
And that's why I changed it to does not consistently support.
Because, and, and just to clarify, Peter, I think what we were going for is the fact that the superintendent would be hiring administrators that only fit their philosophy of teaching. That's where it needed s, needs improvement, they weren't looking at the overall picture. So, that's where the support came into play.
Got it.
And, and I don't, maybe instead of that fit her philosophy of teaching, we go back to who share the school's mission? Because I noticed in exemplary and proficient, we use that terminology.
That would make it more parallel.
So, s, uh, say that part again, I'm sorry.
Um, supports a hiring administrators, um, who share the school's mission.
But remember, this is needs improvement, unless I'm losing something.
Right, no, 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 you're right. So, the, what you're getting at is the word supports strikes you as sounding like something that's better than needs improvement.
Well, when I read this, if, if I decide that the superintendent is only support, is supporting the hiring of administrators that fit the superintendent's philosophy of teaching, that needs improvement, because it's just fitting.
Oh, it's just her.
The superintendent's philosophy of teaching.
Her own agenda, kind of a thing.
I think it's just, I think we should just stick with the, the word that Nancy suggested.
But does not consistently support?
Right, I, right, I think it's just the, the words we have.
So, then, it's, it, just review, it's does not participate in recruitment, does not consistently support the hiring, participates in the.
Recruitment and hiring.
Participates in recruitment and hiring.
Yep.
Right.
So, how would you finish the sentence? Does not consistently support the hiring of administrators, period?
Of effective.
Of effective educators.
Of effective educators. And then, right, so I would eliminate then the whole opening, everything from supports through philosophy of teaching. That first sentence would, if I'm understanding, comes out. It's replaced with does not consistently support, and then I would under proficient simply start with consistently participates. That's what I would propose, that we simply add that word, consistently participates, and this is under proficient. Simply adding the word consistently participates in the recruitment and hiring process with the goal of offering positions to qualified educators. Sue, is that clear?
And under needs improvement, just so I'm clear, does not consistently support the hiring of qualified educators?
Uh, yes, because we're changing from qualified to effective, you want to be consistent there, right? Um. So, do you want to change effective to qualified under needs improvement?
Oh.
Right, there's the distinction. If I'm looking at proficient and needs improvement.
Okay, effective.
Which qualified or, or.
We're saying does not support, does not consistently support.
Right, so we have consistently participates, that's proficient, does not consistently support, that's needs improvement, it's the what? Is it the qualified hiring, you know, um.
Which was used in exemplary and proficient? So, you'd be consistent then with your language? I think I took.
So, what, which word would you like to use? Say that again, I'm sorry, I missed it.
No, I'm just commenting that the qualified verbiage is in both, um, exemplary and proficient.
Would make it parallel to put it in needs improvement as well.
Right, so if you were to say does not consistently support the hiring of qualified.
So, instead of the word effective, change it to qualified under needs improvement, yes? Sue, does that make sense? Great. Any other, uh, questions? We're through scheduling and management information, law, ethics, and policy. Um, Nancy had a question about our language under fulfills all compliance and reporting requirements, then, and creates new opportunities to support learning. Um, and, uh, then discussing handling. Um, and uh, then discussing handling those issues. I'm trying to recreate from my notes and couldn't why we have the new opportunities to support learning under law, ethics and policies. So I would agree with the, with the deletion there. Of and creates new opportunities to support learning.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so that goes. Okay, Sue? Uh, there was just a omission in my notes on page five, under proficient, under fiscal systems, we need to add in a and manner, under proficient. Just wanna make sure that the better half of the wordsmithing project here is. Okay. Uh, then under outreach indicator. Oops, I think I, I jumped one head. Yep, so we're on page six. Is that correct? So here, the suggestion is that we consider adopting a language provides resources and support for all personnel for outreach efforts and community in order to, to attract prospective students. Now.
So my thinking behind this is that I don't necessarily create all the outreach efforts in the district. You know, it's, it's uh, you know, I have to uh, support my administrators and set the expectation with building administrators and teachers and all educators in our district, that they will have these outreach uh, efforts, rather than me personally creating them.
So how about if it read provides resources and support for all personnel to create outreach efforts?
Right. Do we wanna take out the word partnerships?
I, you know what? I would like to keep uh, community partnerships. And then since you've got personnel above, that's what's referred to as administrators and guidance counselors. So I would, I would propose that we keep partnerships, take out for building administrators and guidance counselors. And then resume with in order two. So it would read, I would propose that it read now, for exemplary performance under the outreach indicator, provides resources and support for all personnel to create outreach efforts and community partnerships in order to attract, protect prospective students at school events and other outreach programs. It's a mouthful, but I think it says what we want it to. Yes? Does that work? Okay. So the communications indicator. And again, I think the note here is that not only does the superintendent use all forms, but encourages all of the administrators within the district to do that, um, and that it includes or including district website, social media.
All the things that you listed.
Right.
And at the bottom, I, I um, drafted this one, at the bottom, I think you're just kinda shortening um, a lot of words summarizing what I'm saying. Uh, so, ensures that all communications is culturally proficient by getting feedback from district staff, families and community members that informs improvement to communication plans versus.
And it can stop there, is that your?
Well, and I think what I was trying to do is broaden it also.
Right.
So that, you know, I wasn't confined just to what was listed here.
Right, right.
But, you know, there might be other things as well.
Yep, so that made sense to me anyway.
Great, I think after that, we simply have a word change that we're actually on a quarter system rather than a term system. So. Any other questions about this document? Cause then what I would ask, are there any other questions? What I would ask then is, sorry?
Can I just ask a?
Yep.
Because I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting that we went through that and we received the rubric. That's the actual superintendent rubric. So, I know that we spent a lot of work on this, and that's probably the reason, the rationale as to why we're doing this, but why aren't we using this?
Well, we're required to either adopt that for n- next year, or adapt it. So, I think part of it is that that came out midstream. We, we certainly, I would say that it's perfectly legitimate at our meeting on the thirteenth of March, correct? For a proposal to come forward that rather than, now that this document's complete, that we use that instead of this.
No, I'm just curious, cause I, I'm assuming you must've had the discussion too, but I just, I feel bad, cause we did spend so much time on this, and then this came out.
Well, if, if you missed that meeting, cause all of our faces were.
Okay, thank you, because that's what I thought when I received this, I'm like, are you serious?
But if I could comment, I think it's probably advisable to go with the rubric that you created for this evaluation. And then use the new rubric next year, because that is in line with the principals' rubric and the teachers' rubric. So there's a nice vertical alignment among teacher, principal and superintendent rubrics, which there isn't necessarily this year, and I think the rubric that you created is more based on the conversations that we've had and, and sort of the expectations you've set for me already, so.
So you're okay with what we're doing?
Yes, no, I think it makes sense to do it this way.
Okay.
And I appreciate the work that you put into it.
Okay, so then, Sue, if, if we could direct that with the changes that we've noted this evening, that you simply include as part of the March thirteenth proposal, a final draft, and that we'll take a vote to adopt that at that time. Along with any uh, considerations that anyone may have between now and then. Thank you for your hard work on, on the creation of that document. I agree um, with what's been said about the value of it, and I, I, I still to be, I wasn't being unnecessarily provocative there in saying that I think in some places our language is better than the state document, and I would prefer to be evaluating our superintendent based on our, our language. I know that there are folks, uh, both nationally and, and in Boston who um, are opposed to what they will call derisively the tyranny of localism. Um, and I'm willing to push back on that and say sometimes local um, school committees have a better sense, though we may not be informed by all of the latest and greatest in educational research. Uh, but the one size fits all is something that I think it's fair for us. I certainly would advocate that we, whenever we think that there's a just foundation. Not just on principle, but when there's a just foundation, that we wanna say to our superintendent, here's something that's important in East Hampton that the state document doesn't reveal, will not give us feedback. And yet, at the end of the year, should our superintendent not have addressed that and not have made progress on that, we would find the superintendent service wanting. It would be unfair to then turn around and say to the superintendent, well, cheese, you know? Uh, because remember, one of the tricks to this is that if, if ever we should decide that we want to, and, and, you know, we're all professional here at this stage, if we ever decide we wanted to change superintendents, this is one of the documents that would be pointed to as an indicator, cause I think a fair, uh, due process in any labor practice is to say to an employee, here are the things that we're assessing you on. So, um, I don't think there's anything in the language that says we can't take this document and add to it for next year. That does require a different step.
Yeah.
That requires.
That's a big step.
Right, it, all it says is that the state has to approve those. The state would have to approve any um, evaluation indicators that we chose to adopt beyond the scope of what they've outlined there. The state would say, we wanna see them in writing, and they might, they well reserve the right to say, no, you can't use them. And that's part of the new game. And again, I respectfully disagree with that rule of the new game, cause it's a mandate. If the governor wants to give us all the money, wait until we get to the teacher evaluation part of this, right? As Ladonna and Nancy can attest from the meeting that they attended, which I'm assuming we're gonna hear about in an upcoming meeting. Or did I miss something? Yes? That we, the MASC education evaluate, this is gonna cost us a lot of money.
I think, I think, Peter, also, you know, we have the labor management uh, team now that, that we've put together, had a first meeting today. And so I think that there'll be reports coming out of that, because this is a, a committee of teachers and administrators looking at the model evaluation system and deciding whether uh, to recommend uh, that we adopt, adapt, or, or revise the model educators' uh, system. One of the things that, you know, we came to really understand today, as we thought about the rubrics that we were looking at, is that once you start to revise one rubric, um, then you may need to look at the others as well, because there is such a close vertical alignment with the, with the rubrics. But there certainly is a process that we can ga- and engage in um, to look at that. And, and we certainly are able to add things to the rubrics, so. To uh, to be determined.
Okay, thank you for your hard work. Again, um, Superintendent Fonsky, our, your superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly update you on these three items. Uh, first of all, the innovation schools planning grant. Uh, I think you were aware last spring that we had gotten a planning grant with Ware and Granby and Belcher Town to um, to, to consider if we wanted to uh, create uh, an innovation school. And at that time, we were looking at creating a virtual school that um, we would, and an alternative school that uh, you know, our students could benefit from, and that also students from other districts could benefit from. Since then, um, the su- the other superintendent and I have had uh, some meetings with um, DUCI representatives uh, on this innovation schools grant, and the state has taken a shift in terms of looking at total virtual schools to really um, promoting the idea of blended schools, a blended model, which is a virtual education with facilitation by teachers in your district, or um, you know, teachers in this, in this collaborative. So we've begun to kind of shift the way we're looking at this. Uh, we had a meeting in February, February eighth, and um, decided that we were going to look at two initiatives. One was the alternative school, which would be placed in Belcher Town. This is again, still planning. And the other was this blended virtual model. So um, we've put things up on the website and, and people are making comments about them, doing some research. I'm meeting with the uh, superintendents again this week um, to look at the data we've collected. And the goal is, this spring, to determine whether we're going to go forth and request a grant to uh, implement a, an innovation school. At this point, the committee is not um, has not decided whether uh, going forth with an innovation schools grant is what, what is going to be the decision of the committee or not. So, that's what we're do- working on right now to determine whether we go forth. The planning grant was fifteen thousand dollars. That, um, some of that money will be used to um, visit other districts that have similar models. The actual grant, uh, should we apply for it and receive it, would be seventy-five thousand dollars, which is not uh, a, an enormous amount of money to implement an innovation school. So I think we're all, right now, uh, also looking at the economic impact on any of our districts and the sustainability of this. So, before we make any steps, you know, we have to be very careful about uh, having all the information, so. That's where we are on that. Um, any questions about that? The next is accommodation schools grant update. This is very exciting news, um, well, potentially exciting. Because we have two commendation schools in our district, Peppin School and Center School, we are eligible to form partnerships with other districts uh, and apply for a grant, which um, we have done. Um, Shirley Guilfeather has written the grant. She and I did a lot, had a lot of conversations about what we'd want to uh, have in the grant. And we've talked with other districts, so the grant is written uh, for a partnership between East Hampton, uh, the Northampton Schools and the Westfield Schools. And um, the partnership actually will include twelve schools spanning three grade levels. Uh, so there'll be an elementary and a secondary component. And uh, there'll be a mix of schools in levels one, two and three. Um, so that we can, uh, so that i- in collaboration, we can benefit from the expertise in the schools in level one, and um, and the level three schools can benefit from that, and the le- and uh, the other way around as well, because there's a mixture in all three districts. Uh, so there are two parts to it. One is a leadership forum with um, administrators from elementary and secondary levels getting together to share best practices. And around the conditions for school effectiveness, those are the same conditions that we used when we were doing our strategic plan. And um, this will be under the guidance of a facilitator with experts, expertise and leadership. Uh, and one person we're considering is Dr. Ken Chapman, who's been a trainer in the Saffir Model of Skillful Teacher and Skillful Leader. So, he would be facilitating this group of administrators really thinking about best practice and possibly having opportunities to be, to uh, visit each other's schools. So, because we have commendation elementary schools, we would expect that, you know, we would have some expertise in that, and we'd be inviting people to visit our schools. Um, because we have a level three high school, we would be looking to um, other districts to see what kinds of things they'd put into place and possibly doing some uh, visits to level one high schools. Um, the other part of it is a mathematics vertical team forum, and um, this would be to explore mathematics from elementary through high school. And this team would be under the guidance of Dr. Anne Collins, Director of Mathematics at Leslie University, as well as a DSAC mathematics specialist and a DSAC data specialist. So they would facilitate this rich discussion about um, mathematics and mathematics development through the grade with the goal of having a strong vertical continuum of mathematics instruction K to twelve. The total request, the, the, um, we are actually requesting more than the uh, grant suggested we request for um, our project, but because we're involving so many other schools and so many other districts, we're requesting ninety-six thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars to facilitate all of this work. Um, the grant timeline i- is that uh, the funding has to be spent between now and August thirty-first. Short timeline again, but we would start with meetings um, almost immediately upon receiving the grant funds, and we would have uh, half-day sessions during the summer as well. So, um, teachers uh, who are involved in the math continuum would be paid stipends for that work. Um, the estimated notification for this grant would be uh, early March. So we'll let you know as soon as we know whether we've um, been accepted uh, for this grant, so we're very excited about that. And the last bit of news is that the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards, which used to be called Grin Spoon, um, I am uh, going to um, go into the buildings on Wednesday morning and award the three teachers that we've determined uh, will receive this award this year. So, we'll have a little celebration of that on Wednesday morning and try to um, I've contacted Barbara Solo, so she knows that we're going to be doing this. Uh, and then there will be a um, uh, an awards dinner in uh, May for the three candidates who are selected. So I will be happy to, you'll, you can actually stay tuned and we'll announce that uh, on our website and, and I hope in the media on Wednesday.
Like the Oscars, right?
Exactly. Exactly. We're very proud of the teachers who are going to, who are going to be receiving these awards, and I'm very excited to be able to deliver the awards to those teachers on Wednesday. And those are my reports.
Alright, well, those are, those are great, great news, and, and uh, thank you very much. Nancy, so we have a couple of matters for action, and then we can retire for the evening. For what's left of the evening.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't wanna use that one.
Those are the.
Yeah, those are the budget.
Supposed to be the minutes in there?
But you know what?
I'll just look at.
The minutes are here. Here you go. So, the minutes from the January twenty-third. You got them? You wanna look here?
Nah, I have them right here.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, school committee meeting, regular session.
All in favor?
Alright, second.
Sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I went too fast. I jumped the gun, to borrow a phrase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Motion to approve the school, the superintendent evaluation work session on January twenty-third, twenty-twelve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the superintendent evaluation work session on January twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to.
Wait, you, uh, let me back up. Would you, I, Laura, I think you wanna abstain on that.
But I've, and another in my collaborative, they continue to tell us that you can still, as long as I approve them.
Oh, okay, super. Yeah, no problem.
Is that okay? I mean.
Absolutely, it's okay with me. I just wanted to be sure.
I understand I wasn't there.
Absolutely, no sweat.
Motion to approve the budget work session meeting minutes of February thirteenth, twenty-twelve.
Second.
Uh, motion made, uh, sorry. Uh, motion made, uh, sorry, I had thrown off reading the text of the presentation. To, uh, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the budget work session on February thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific. Go to the really tough part.
Okay, so let's see here. Do you want some payroll?
You bet.
Move to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated March first, two thousand and twelve in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars sixty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated one March, two thousand and twelve in the amount of three hundred sixteen thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Move to approve the school payroll dated February twenty-third, two thousand and twelve in the amount of four hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seven dollars seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the school payroll dated twenty-three February, two thousand and twelve in the amount of four hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to approve accounts payable authorization for payment dated February sixteenth, two thousand and twelve in the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand sixty dollars ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated sixteen February, two thousand and twelve in the amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand sixty dollars and ninety-eight cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have an out-of-district.
I move that we accept the Whitebrook Middle School out-of-state field trip to Howe Caverns on June fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the out-of-district field trip to Howe Caverns. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'll entertain another motion.
Remove that we adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Sorry to have kept you so long, but you worked hard. I appreciate it very much. Try to save.